All right, if you're all right, if you're in. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. If you've not signed in and wish to do so, now would be an appropriate time. I see we're all present in the crowded court, so we can denote that. Is there any agenda modifications at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll see to the approval of the last two council meeting minutes. At this point, I'm intending motion to approve October 3rd special council meeting minutes. Eight moves. Marty, second minute. Is there any more discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
I post. Same side, great. Marty passes. Now we'll move on to the October 6th council meeting minutes. Let's go on now, accept the motion to approve.
Don't move.
Okay, Mr. Martin moved. Mr. Thomas seconded. Any more discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
I post. Uh, this one one, at this time, I'll accept any, um, public comments from the audience. Anybody got anything? Mr. Hapson, you come on up. You've got three minutes. I will warn you at 2:45. There could be something fairly obvious, so, okay?
I'll try to squeeze it in. Last night, a city council member from Tico posted on Facebook some incorrect information about chlorine in our water. There were several responses, first of which was for myself, asking why it was posted, and with correct information contrary to the original post. There were a few other responses pertaining to correct chlorine levels and some other interesting banter between residents and family members. There were no comments by the original poster. I'm gonna read the post now. Chlorine levels at my house tonight is point nine, way over limit for state. Every day for past three weeks as I test each day. This becomes a health risk to newborns and other people. State limits are, this is still in the post, state limits are point two to point four. I had to buy water yesterday for the baby in our house. Back to my words, the actual state limits are point two to four point zero parts per million, with point eight being typical. I believe the original post was put out simply to smear the city, the mayor, and the city employees. This was posted by Dave Tyes, a water operator who does not seem to know the state requirements for chlorine levels in drinking water. I have copies of his post available tonight. Within an hour of him posting it, he took it down since several of us had noticed how wrong his information was. I managed to get a screenshot before it disappeared completely with the previous post visible below, so it's obvious it did exist. This type of posting could needlessly spread fear around town, and with again Dave appearing as the hero for pointing it out and letting the word be known. Dave, due to the fact that you cannot be trusted as a water operator or as a city council member, I'm calling for immediate, your immediate resignation as a member of the Tico City Council and every city position as a water operator. You cannot trust, we cannot trust your knowledge or information in any regard. You could have simply acknowledged your mistake, but instead you took it down, which makes you look worse. If it was a tie bone, you could have fixed it. Thank you.
Thank you. This, do we have any more comments from the audience? Okay, number one, I need community group updates. Okay, unfinished business, um, union, uh, union negotiator contract verification and payment request.
So, there is a copy of the, uh, payment agreement in the packets, and you've already agreed to it, but it does need to be, uh, signed, agreed on and signed, so that we can, uh, go ahead and approve the payment to, uh, the, uh, the grant.
Okay. Do you need, you guys just go look at it, see where we're at?
So that...
Yeah, I think they can just go ahead. The one Tony gave me had all the councils' signatures on it, but we keep getting...
I haven't signed anything.
I know. It's, it's the one, it's, it just has the blank signatures on it. They don't want to sign anything yet.
Is that right there?
Yeah.
Should we all sign?
He sent me another one, too. We can just, you guys can also just approve the mayor to sign. He sent me another one, which is the mayor's signature on it as well.
I think we all should sign.
Yeah, coming back to the best, we all sign.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Okay.
Can we, um, I'll send his copy around then, her signatures.
Do we, do we need a motion again or anything?
I guess, yeah, give your motion, you'll approve it, and then everyone can sign up. Approve the approval? Basically, all right, I'll, I'll accept the motion to approve what we already talked about.
Second. We're covering for now only August to September, which is, and I thank you, Eliza, for getting that done.
All right. Any discussion?
I haven't seen anything on that. I haven't seen the contract at all.
It, it's in the packet that was sent to you?
I didn't get a packet, and I'm not getting my emails. Still, yeah. I'm getting everything from AWC, but I'm not getting anything from you.
I'm sending emails to the same...
I'm not, well, I'm not getting them.
Well, maybe you need to check your board folder.
So, um, this is just from August to September?
Yes.
Well, I think this is just in terms of this, of this total, I don't think it's just, I, I think it's just in terms of this total representation.
Well, there's the bill, sir.
The bill, there.
Bill, sir.
And he's got the contract, and then we signed that, and then he was, he put that, a claim in, and that this is being addressed for August and September. We initially had one for August, but we, that didn't get done, and timing matters, so we decided to add in September.
Okay.
That'll bring us up to speed.
Sharon, would you like some time?
Yes, I would.
Okay, we're gonna come back on this. We've got a motion on the floor, but we're gonna...
I'd like to at least go through and see it.
Okay, can we do this tonight, or...
Yes, we could, we could do it right now.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna proceed on with the rest of our agenda, if you don't, if you can kind of work this through, okay? All right, um, we'll go to new business, J U B progress report, contract change and payment request. Tim, you're up, Dave.
Hey. Thank you. I just wanna get a quick update to the council and, um, yeah, just kind of give you a progress update. Little bit additional, more information today than previously, I guess. So today, uh, we had a walkthrough with the city, the mayor, Mike, contractor, and a couple of J U B engineers to go through, walk it, uh, develop a punch list. Uh, there's one spot that, where it looks like we're maybe going to seal or provide some sealer on. Again, if you had a chance to go out there and look at it, I would encourage you to do that. It's, it turned out really well. Uh, there is one spot that needs to be looked at. We looked at that today, and I think we're gonna research some air, some patch, uh, solutions potentially to...
Is that from selling, or is that just the way it was put together?
Uh, it's a combination of things. So, when the constru-, so when we came out and talked about this, um, well, this, this project was intended to be done early midsummer, but again, soft subgrade, and Mike came and kind of presented that, and the issues we were having with the, with the clay, um, we were able to change order in, uh, with the state to bring in ballast of additional rock, uh, base course, remove some of the clay, install some fabric, and so we did some spot repairs. It ended up being pretty significant areas of, of repair. Uh, and this area just didn't quite have enough time to set up, but we were kind of forced with the weather and the end of the construction season to go anyway, and so ninety, ninety percent of the surface turned out great, and there's one area probably about the size of, it's probably like three by ten, yeah, four by ten, about, about the size of a car. And within that area, it's probably like a couple of small, like, uh, they're just roller marks that kind of pressed the asphalt down and made it like a little plemish. Uh, again, um, I would encourage you all to look at it. It's really, um, we're really up in the air about, do we fix it, do we cut it out? You know, a lot of different solutions were kicked around to, to make sure that it is the way that the city wants it to be. And so even having, uh, looked at that, I think Stephen took a look at it as well, and so, again, we're looking at a, a small fix to get that, to get that done. And so we'll be issuing a substantial completion. What that does is that stops the contract time for the contractor, uh, and then we'll be communicating with the state to let them know that this contract is gonna stay open to the spring. So we got one coat of paint on the runway, so that allows it to be open. Um, and we talked last time about a dirt pile being out there. I believe that's been taken care of, so. Um, and then there, the contract has two coats of paint, so the second coat of paint can't be applied because it's too cold. So that's gonna push everything into the spring, and so, yeah, you know, estimated time would be like May of next year, which will be good. It'll give you one winter to kind of plow it and, um, and use it, and then you'll get a fresh coat of paint in the spring, and that'll kind of wrap that project. And so that will be, you know, that'll include, um, yeah, so that, that'll be the balance of work left over for the spring, for this project. And then, um, they'll be, then I'll be bringing forth at that time, next year, a, a contract amendment. So we thought to add, um, a couple of things. One, record drawings, since this runway is significantly different than the way we designed it, and that was not in our scope of work. We have some additional geotechnical testing and some construction administration, as well as contracts being held over, so. We're hoping this all got wrapped up this year. Um, but we'll be holding that open till spring of 2026, mainly just for the final paint, but there will need to be, uh, some oversight on that. Again, that's all weather dependent, and then they'll be closed out at the, in the spring. That's kind of the preview of things to come for this project, but for the most part, like I said, if you haven't had a chance to go out there, I would encourage you to do that. It's, the asphalt surface is really smooth, and it turned out, turned out great except for the spot, so.
I walked that whole thing today, and it's, it's a pretty doggone good job, and, and one area we're talking about, I'll get ahold of Alex, but, uh, thanks to Dan, I got some information. I may have located a durable patcher to take care of that, that problem.
So, Tim, are we, where are we budget-wise on this whole project? Are we still within our grant, or...
So, you're within the grant plus the amendment, so the, the council approved pursuing amendment. We pursued the full amount of the amendment. Um, and I apologize to Eddie for the financial summary with me again tonight, but, uh, so we're within the, the, the grant plus amendment amount. We're under, we're underneath it.
The amendment amount, is that out of the city conference, or is that...
Uh, there's this, the city portion of the amendment is the match, which is five.
Twenty-three hundred twenty, that's what we approved earlier.
Yeah, and that was approved in the summer. As soon as we got to the runway, uh, subgrade issues, that, that's what forced the amendment.
Is that the one, Mike, that you said would pay for itself, or...
No, that's for the gas fuel system.
That's another.
This was a matching fund to go with the, Western State DOT granted us extra money, to the max of what they would allow, but we still had to pay the five percent match on that, and it was twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars, and we brought that to the council. The council did approve that expenditure.
What did we originally agree to?
I want to go back to the, but, but the original amount that we matched, uh, the porter Whitman jumped in on that and helped us with that, so we've stayed within the budget amounts that the city has budgeted all along. We have not gone over anything that we previously budgeted. So we're still doing good there. We're, we're still using other people's money.
So, Tim, with, with, you said keeping it open into next spring, is that, is the potential then for running costs up further?
Not above that amount.
We're still with, with that, so that...
Yeah, we're committed to being in that, in, in what council has approved. Look, so that's, and some of that's gonna come out of ours, just because it's been, yes, the point of projects is gonna shape, shape them, so. So, uh, um, yeah, so that will stay within what's been approved by council, so I won't become like a council asking for more than what's already been approved.
So you're just updating us tonight, basically? Not asking for more money, you're just updating us?
No, no, I think it'll be like a shuffling. If there's a little bit of money left from construction, we would have to amend our agreement to cover that, but it won't be beyond the total dollars that the city has already committed to the project. So it'll just kind of be a shuffling, but I do want to let everybody know, it will be held over, so with Eliza and the city administering and giving updates to the state, that's not, that wasn't anticipated, but again, paving was so late in the summer that it got, it was right on the verge of weather shutting us down anyway, so. We're able to get it paved and get it painted, but we still need a little bit. There's a little bit more. Okay?
Mike said he'd chip in anything over.
No, not necessar-, not necessary.
I'll put you in my will, Tim.
Appreciate that.
We don't like your generous, thank you.
You need anything for us tonight?
Uh, no, no, that's just a update. I just, yeah, that's kind of a preview of things that comes, substantial completion, um, and then some other, you know, project administration things, but I'll come, I'll come back if there is a motion needed. But that's just an update for the group, since we did do the walkthrough today.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, well, let's start. Mike, you open loan agreement?
In case you haven't heard, uh, Western State DOT did approve, uh, funding through their two percent low-cost loan for the fuel pump system. Um, the current quote that I have is good through the 31st of October. We're still waiting for DOT to send us the, the loan agreement, and what I'm asking the council to do tonight is approve the loan contingent on everything staying the way it was, the two percent loan, the twenty-year payback. Uh, it would start November next year, and the airport is self-sustaining on that. And the reason I'm asking now is so that we can go ahead and take advantage of that current quote price, so it doesn't go up on us and we have to start all over again, but DOT's approved it. They're working on getting the loan paperwork to us. I'd just like to be able to move forward on that, and I'm asking the council for contingency approval.
Mike, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
I've been talking to a lot of people recently, and just a couple of questions about the airport that I want to make sure that I understand, um, uh, out there. So how, how many people does the airport serve, I mean, as far as people who...
We've got, I'm guessing that six or seven planes are there regularly.
About how many come in and out, like the fuel and stuff, any idea?
Well, I've been listening and, and watching. I was out there a couple of times, and we've had probably, oh, anywhere from two to four planes a day coming and going out of there. Uh, we're currently shut down for, for night approaches because we have no lights, so we don't have any of that, but we're probably serving, I'm gonna say probably fifty planes a month. We've got the cheapest fuel in town, so.
Where are we at on the light situation out there?
Well, we're out, we have, uh, thank you for asking. Um, we have all the lights and the, the stands and all of that, and I found out there's something called a can, and it's basically a, a metal cylinder with a base plate on top of it that those lights go into, but we have them for half of them. We don't have them for the other. So right then, I'm trying to find some cost information on those, so I can come back to the council and let you guys know what the cost is on those, and we can figure out a way to take care of those. And once we have those in place, then it's just a matter of Stephen and, and Jeff going out there and just making all the connections.
Well, you, you don't have to have licensed bonded electricians to put that in out there?
No.
Oh, for putting in lights and stuff, you don't?
We also have a retired Avista employee, um, thirty-eight years with Avista. He has some equipment that we might be able to use, and he's volunteered that any time our guys are out there making those connections, he would love to come down and help them. But we're not servicing housing or buildings or anything, it's just lights on the runway, so you don't need the licensed and bonded, uh, electrician.
So that helps us with costs?
Well, we have a...
Me kind of, yeah.
And then when it comes to the fuel cells, or i- is there any, so is the airport generating income or, for, for the city? I mean, I know we have the rentals, and you've been working on trying to bring those a little bit more up to speed, but is there, is there any way, are we making, is it just pretty much self-sustaining, especially now that the fuel cells will be all pretty much going into pain for this twenty-year loan, is that correct?
Yeah, fuel cells have stayed within the airport funding. They have come back to the city. They've stayed there, and that's part of making that airport self-sustaining, because we have some maintenance, we have snowplow out there, and other things, and with the funding available from our hangar leases, plus the sales that we have through fuel, that's provided us with at least enough money to cover the loan and still be able to cover what maintenance that we have out there.
So what do you feel is the long-term overall purpose for the airport, in, in, is, in the way that it can really benefit Tico going forward?
It's, it's gonna be a multi-year down the road. What I'm looking at, and I need to talk to the guys from J U B about our ongoing planning, but the goal is to have more hangar spaces available on the south side of the runway, have what they call a pilot's son, which is basically a, a vault, uh, a place to temporarily park your airplane. But by doing that, we can attract people here. Um, I'm even looking at the possibility of, uh, aircraft maintenance or repair, uh, maybe a, a pilot instructors program out there, and that's where the money's gonna come back to the city in the form of increased, uh, tax revenue and rent and things like that. That's what, it's gonna take three or four years to get there.
So you say, so you say three years, five years, ten years before, or...
Well, I, I would say probably four years, maybe five, but, um, right now, because if we don't want to spend a lot of money out there, uh, and have to pay all that stuff back, I want to do it a step or two at a time, so that we're staying within what monies the airport has, but down the road, the city's gonna see increased revenue.
And my last question then is, so with the, the things that have been going, I know there was a period of time that life flight wasn't able to use that while you were, i- i- is it up and usable, and will it continue? I mean, that, that's probably the biggest benefit, is there's not really a great place for life flight other than out there. I mean, I know that...
And I understand that. It's a wide open life flight, and those guys understand, and working with the ambulance group, they know where they can land. They have adequate lighting on the aircraft to see, so it's wide open for their use.
Even now?
Even now. It's, the airport is wide open, with the exception, we don't have flights for our landing.
And everything we do going forward will continue to accommodate life flight mostly?
Oh, yeah, you bet. That's one of the goals, and I, I'll bring something up else here in a little bit, too, along that subject, but, um, I see nothing but positive means. Eventually, besides putting the money on the till for the airport, there's gonna be revenues coming back to the city. And it, it's all about growth management and growth, and sometimes it's one foot in front of the other, and it, it's small step, but I see us getting there in four or five years.
Thanks for answering my questions.
Okay.
So do we need to approve?
If you would, I, I would like a contingent approval for that loan, so that we can go ahead and move forward before we run out of the, uh, quote bid, uh, deadline.
How much it'll earn, I can't remember.
It's forty-three thousand and change, and actually, the first payment is not due, if I remember correctly, until November next year. So, we're gonna be able to put some money in the till. Um, I'm looking for our gas sales to go back up. Uh, one thing I found out talking to Donovan, he's buying fuel from the city for his wire trucks, from the avgas, because it doesn't deteriorate, it, it makes them run better, so. We're selling the fire departments some fuel. We're selling lots of airplane fuel. Uh, I've talked to several pilots. One guy lives in Deer Park, and he flies down here for fuel. He won't go to Spels Field, or he won't go to Poland, because he doesn't want to get caught up in the congestion, I'm sure they are. And I think eventually, if we can get some type of a vehicle out there for pilots to use, then that's gonna give them a method or a way to come into town, too. So that's another one of my steps in my planning, and hopefully that won't be too far down the road.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? You've kind of got a bird's eye view of that place out there, don't you?
Yeah, I see it around the corner.
Can't you...
I can watch them come and go, but I can't see the airfield itself.
Okay. All right, okay, this time I'll accept the motion to approve the...
Make a motion to approve that.
The contract, okay? Sharon, second, okay, all right. Any discussion? All those favor, aye? Say aye. I post. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good job, Mike.
Okay, uh, Ackerman estimate for library furnace through the grants.
So, uh, the council team asked to sign off, to approve this bid for the improvements that are going in the library and the museum. Uh, this is not something that the city is paying for. This is a grant that was applied for through the library. But we still have to approve it, as the city chooses.
But, so, and that's, that's great to have the grant. It seems such a, it's, it's like a lot of money for a project, but is that the way they are now?
Is this the only one we got? Is that what we did?
This is, this came through the library. This is not a process that we went through. So it, it's the, um, I may not say this right, but it's like the condenser unit that sits outside, and then it's two low-temperature mini-spits, one for the library and one for the museum, which originally we did not think we would be able to get the one for the museum, so that's great.
Okay, well, it's great this comes by grant. I just, I'm just surprised how much, how much the cost or is this, is big?
My, my experience in working with James and, um, with down at Colfax, when they, when they try to bring in something for one of the towns and the libraries, I mean, they're really looking at something that's gonna be a long-term investment, because, you know, that they're very dedicated to uh, the longevity of the libraries in the community, and, um, and I think that's great that they extended that to the museum, where they get the, like, that. So, I, 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 my experience of working with them for almost seven years is that you probably found it a, a great deal for us.
Okay, not true.
Yeah, and that, that oil furnace that was in there, I don't know, was it nineteen eighties or older? Um, but I know that when Ackerman came in there, when I was in there, he said, "I'm kind of surprised it's running." And so, um, it's just really, would drain the city continually, um, at this point, so it's, so I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, spin moving, seconding. Um, any discussion?
The city doesn't have any responsible information, sounds correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And what's the timeline on this, man?
Um, as soon as we can give them approval, then they will, they'll get started as soon as possible.
All right, any more discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Post, same side? Great, motion passes. Thank you. Century West wastewater facilities plan. You guys see this little light reading in front of you? This was delivered today by Mr. Williams, uh, Century West. The guy that we've been talking to, and, uh, uh, he apologized profusely about the timing. We've got a lot of things going on up there, and so they've been burning the midnight oil, trying to get this thing put together.
He, there's nobody here to discuss this.
No, it's for us to read, um, to go through, pick out the high points, the low points, and, um, at this point, we'll pass this on to, perhaps we could start reviewing this also. So then, uh, you had a deeper conversation with David than I did, so.
So, he's asking if we can, uh, get this turned around and have a special meeting this Thursday. So, they, they, they will submit it, because it's an extremely tight timeline to get this through Department of Ecology. So I know it's a lot of reading for everybody, but, um, if that's possible, that's what they're asking us to do, because, yeah, we can't wait till the next meeting, because then we will already have over, we have gone over the, um, sixty days.
Six, six o'clock, okay?
If that's okay with all of you.
Good to hear.
Will Matt be able to?
Yeah.
Or will you be there?
Yeah. You know, kind of explained that, that we don't have to come up with a final proposal. We just have to approve something. And it kind of puts it in, correct?
Once it, my understanding is that once it is with Department of Ecology, we can still change the plan. But it starts the process in motion.
Okay.
What would be a reason for changing? Like, we get into it and realize there's gonna be a harder component, or something's gonna toss more?
Or maybe there's an option that wasn't thought about that is, makes a lot of sense for the city. for the city.
We get that rock. It's something I'm hoping.
And then do some of the processes, if I'm, if I'm right, Matt, the alternatives, you can go through the alternatives, and so there's gonna be cheaper alternatives. So to get to the final cost.
So we do not appreciate it.
Six o'clock?
We need a motion for that.
Yeah. Yes. You gonna send that or email it?
Well, I'm motion-
And yes, post it on.
Yeah.
Well, I'm motion for a special meeting on Thursday at six, and P R.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say again.
Okay, one second. Excuse me. Yes, sir? Do you need me here to record that? If you've got nothing else better on your-
Well, I do, but I can be here for that.
We were, I don't know. It's up to you.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted it as a covered.
I don't, I'm not sure there's gonna be a bunch of discussion.
That's because I'm asking if you wanted it recorded for the city or-
What do you think, Matt? Is there gonna be a lot of discussion? I'm gonna defer to you on this deal, okay?
It might be.
I'll be here. Okay.
He can't lend any, any comments to it at this meeting? I don't know. I mean, this is a lot of things, I mean, this is a big thing to look at. Be nice to know if there's some direction you can add.
Well, he saw this-
This just came in at five-thirty. He hasn't seen it yet.
They know it down tonight.
Might be helpful if before Thursday, if you just email Eliza to, like, maybe pay attention to, if there's some, so that we could really kind of focus in on-
That was my thing.
Okay.
Do we have a cot where he can stay? I don't know for what he, yeah, I'll drive him back down. All right, so we've got a motion. Sorry, you moved, right? And we have a second.
I'll give a second.
Okay. That we meet Thursday night at six o'clock to review or kick back the wastewater treatment plan, okay? Any discussion? All's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, motion passes. All right. We're cruising along here. Okay, transceiver radio for the airport. Mike?
We're finding out that the only way we can turn the runway lights on is through an aircraft transmitter. Their radio controlled on specific frequencies, so a guy come in and I can trigger them, they'll come on. What I'm asking the council to consider is this is a portable transceiver that has the airport frequencies on, so that the maintenance guys can go out, they can turn the lights on whenever they're working out there to see if they function or not. It also has, it's a limited five mile range, as I understand the brochure. The other thing it does, it gives our crew the capability to communicate with that light. So between those two things, I'm asking that the council would consider approving the purchase of one of these radios. It's two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars plus whatever the taxes for use and working on the runway lights and for communication with life flight.
So for the monthly payment, if there's updates to that, they'll automatically update it within payment?
On the-
For the radio?
Yes, I understand. It's a, well, you gotta fix, the FAA sets all the frequencies. And this is a one-time shot at two-hundred-and-seventy-five, or two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars for the owner of the radio.
Oh.
It's a pretty cheap investment, Mike would think.
What do they do now?
Well, now they have no way to turn the lights on out there, unless they can find an airplane to sit there with the owner there to turn it on.
We didn't do anything before.
We didn't do anything before because we hadn't crossed that bridge yet. And I figured this radio was a whole lot cheaper than us flying an airplane to have a radio. I'm hoping you guys will agree with this. I see a win-win for this for long-term. And the other nice thing about it is because we're not flying international flights out of TECO, we do not need an FCC license to operate this radio.
Let's come out of a general fund or on the airport?
It's probably gonna have to come out of general funds right now. My kitty is, is almost empty out there, and fuel sales will pick up and I'll have some funding, but I would like to have the council approve this for general funds.
You don't wanna wait, don't wanna wait till the next budget cycle to do it?
In for a dime, in for a dollar.
Pardon me?
In for a dime, in for a dollar, we've done this far.
Well, I just see a win-win with this thing.
Okay.
So Mike, when you're done, are you done now tonight for the money?
Still early.
Yeah.
I'll lie, I'll be back to get my stuff on my car then.
I'll let that, I'm sure Mike can talk to you, I'll be good on this.
Yes, there's funds in the general plan.
Well, then I make a motion that we purchase the radio.
Thank you.
Transceiver, great. Is there a second? March second. Any more discussion? All's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you, everybody. And the next time you wanna go out and look at the airport, if I'm around, let me know, I'd be glad to take you out there, show you what's going on and I'm impressed with what Sullen Construction did. They have some extra material left, so they actually went ahead and did some extra paving on one of the runway apron connectors out there, so we'll be going with a little bit on that.
That's impressive.
It, I was able to make it to the meeting, and it was really quite impressive how they pieces, how they, how they approached this. They says, "We could, we could go ahead and cut it out and patch it in," but he says, "Guaranteed, if you cut it, there's gonna be a crack coming off of there." He says, "The best thing is that we can utilize this-"
The dura-patcher?
The dura-patcher, which evidently we found someplace, that that will suffice. And actually, Sullen, the boss, said that they've used it in the fast, and they've gone back a couple of years later, and that is the part that is still good. Some of the other stuff had gone to garbage, but that is the part that was still good. So it's, it's a pretty-
And it will stay within the limits of the budget, so that's not a issue.
And that dura-patcher's an asphalt type, did you ever?
Yeah.
As I understand, it is an extremely heavy oil, almost like a sludge. And then they come out there and they actually apply it with a wand. And then it will mix gravel in there as you need it, if you want, you can set those limits. And then once it's there and it's smoothed out, and once it's hard, you know, and it will be there part longer than the airport. And the big reason for this is we're trying to avoid having water stand, and it's, it differs only that deep. But if water stands is not able to hold winter or freezes, the chances are it's gonna start deteriorating, that asphalt material, and then it's gonna go like that. That's why we're kind of in a hurry to get this fixed up.
So you can do it, you can fix it before winter sets in?
Yeah, that's the intention.
Oh, and one last thing. You just mentioned about plowing. Snow plowing, do you guys plow the runway?
Yeah. Stephen, they take, I, I think they take the, the small belt, they don't actually plow the runway.
It's kinda still open.
I didn't know that. That makes sense.
Does that come out of your airport ledger? Or is that kind of junk?
I would assume it comes out of the airport ledger, but, I mean, it's zip, 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 and they're gone in twenty minutes out there. It's not a-
It's probably kind of fun for them, because they don't have to dodge fire hydrants.
Speaking of that, I did find the perfect plowper out there. I was watching a show the other day, and it's up in Alaska, and the plow comes along because they got cleared their, their runway lights too. As it gets close, the blade opens up, so he can drive right over the top of that light. And there's two brushes, the brush is snow off the light, then he goes by it, blade comes shut, he keeps going.
Maybe next year.
Now, these lights are all side of, aren't they, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, like I say, Stephen and Jeff are out there wiring them in.
Wow.
They've done some things. We found tile lines that run underneath the airport that probably were plugged, probably before life.
That makes sense.
And so they're, they're working at clearing them, and that will be an ongoing process where they go in and take the judder out and make sure that they go through, so that the tile lines actually work, did not act as a cooling agent. Okay, so they don't just collect water.
We get a lot of pain for the bump, that's what it is.
Well, I wasn't aware that there were tile lines underneath it, it was only after we hooked on to a couple of the old council members. Larry Hayden took us out there, and he told us more about that airport than we were knew.
He actually had the original airport design plans.
You're kidding me?
You know, it's on ten sheets this big, and I now have them, and they show all, or most of the stuff now, that none of us even knew existed. We found wiring out there that goes to nowhere. So it's really been an interesting-
No, it was.
It was, it's been an interesting couple of months.
I think we'll write everything down this time soon.
That's really cool, that you've got that, and that you've gotten all this done. I mean, it's amazing.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Okay, we're gonna have an update on labor and industry finding, ma'am?
Okay. So the first half of the labor and industries inspection has been appealed and has concluded. So that is the settlement agreement invoice that you see that says two-thousand-sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. The city's been granted payment plans, so payments on this begin in December, and it'll take approximately a year. The second invoice is for the other half of the inspection, and this is in the appeals process right now. And so that meeting is not until November twenty-sixth, so I won't be able to update you on that until that meeting.
Where is the, where is the amount so far staying that you're appealing?
The amount that we're appealing on this second one is eight-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-four dollars. So on the first one, the original amount, I believe, was three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars or something very close to that. And during the meeting with them, they brought that down to about two-thousand-seven-hundred and some odd dollars. And then the city was granted a twenty-five percent reduction for our overall safety effort.
So we have to send in a correction? Like, I pulled up somebody's wax, are you gonna have to stay corrected?
Yes. So on the first half, everything that can be corrected has been corrected. And actually, as of a few days ago, on the second half, everything that can be corrected is corrected. So we have to send that report in, but we still don't have a meeting with them until November twenty-sixth.
Can you be more specific on what the-
What were the violations? Where were they occurred in the shop or where?
Um, so-
Where were they?
On this one, the violations were on the old city shop roof, when that blew off during a bad windstorm. And I'm afraid I don't have the dates right, but I think it was late last fall, I think. And they were on the roof, but not using tie-downs to the roof. And similarly, on the library roof, I think.
Was it the wellhouse too?
No, I think it was the library. So that's what also-
They don't pay harvest.
They have to have harnesses.
Anything worth for feet?
And then also, I'm not, I think this is also, no, I'm not sure. Some other fines originally were from having to have more eyewash stations. Like, you can't have a door in between chemical and an eyewash station, so we had to put more eyewash stations in and make sure that all of those things were accessible quickly.
Was spraying included any of this? Chemical spraying or anything?
No. That was Department of Agriculture.
That's, that ain't paying there. There's no, no fines pending there?
No, there was a fine for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which is the least amount of fine that they're allowed to give us.
Yeah, you're right.
So let's try to keep you apprised, um, we, we could have, it would have been twenty-four they've offered, but we weren't sure we were gonna get the stuff all taken care of by then, so we wanted to make sure that when we have the conference, that we had everything all taken care of and surveyed and cleaned up before we have the appeal.
Makes sense. There's been, I've heard all kinds of, yeah, a lot of businesses, roofers, who have to find heaven for not being properly partners, working on a common, and they, Spokane gets in all the time, and it can be really heavy fines.
Yeah, there's, if I remember right, the situation was, it was, it opened up, and they just were basically calling up there to look at it. It wasn't like they were gonna work on it, they were just trying to figure out what they actually had involved. And then they, then they exit and came back down, but that was them.
That makes sense.
So all of this was roof, roof maintenance?
I would have to look back at this one specifically. You like it, I happen to-
I don't think there's many shop violations. I mean, they've done a really good job out here, I don't think they even, I think it was more like, like the well, the wells and maybe something not-
Any place where you have chemical, they, you have to have, like I said, an eyewash station and things like that, so.
Yeah, so we had to put in three eyewash stations, part of it. So.
Is that something they haven't ever inspected in the past? I mean, we've had this out here for a long time, so.
They don't just show up and inspect usually.
So how does it come about?
I mean, I know other places and businesses that-
Certainly, if you request them to, they'll come in. And we, I mean, they've got a lot to do, unless you request them to come in and look, which is, will be a good thing in the past, because they will come in and just look and say, "This is, this would be a problem," and they won't, and they won't cite you. Yeah?
Once this process is finished, then they will come in and go through everything with us and say, "You need to do this, and this, and this, and this," and we will get cited for it. And one of their comments was that small towns are typically, have a really hard time keeping up with all the requirements, because we have so few staff, and we still have the same requirements as, you know, any mega city. So that's at least one advantage to this, is that they will come through and help us to get better in other areas.
You know, in a larger community or a larger municipality, there are safety people, that's what they do. And their employees are just water people, or just road people, or just sewer people. They're not holding many hats like ours are. And so it's, you know, it is what it is. And it is unfortunate that it happened, but we're dealing with it, and quite frankly, I'm happy that we're getting, that there were no serious things, I heard there were. I mean, there was, there was always serious, but there was, normally what they'll do is they'll show up after there's been an accident, and then, and then the hammer drops, so.
So I was just, when were you planning to share this with us? Because I hadn't seen it on Facebook. Dave brought it up, and he'd heard randomly, you know, earlier this summer, and asked you about them. And somebody, I remember somebody random, I don't even know who they were, had put on Facebook this summer, was Ellen, I just had our city hall this summer, and somebody who seemed to work for the state said, "Yeah, there's some, something going on," and then we asked you. And then it was, they were posted, apparently somebody must have put in a records request, and they were posted on Facebook, but unamended to, I mean, so, so that we're hiring there. And so, you know, I asked for these to be, it wasn't on the agenda, until I asked today, I think it was, for putting that on. So I just wondered when you were planning to share with us, because obviously, once we all hear it, it doesn't sound, I mean, it, you know, when we don't, when you're hearing out in the community and people are kind of concerned and wonder what's going on, and is this serious things, or they were, it looks like a lot of things, and could it lead to other problems, or, you know, or fines, or lawsuits, or things, if we're not taking care of stuff? So, so this seemed pretty harmless tonight to share this with us. I just wondered why you didn't share it with us earlier.
Because I wanted it to be resolved before I announced it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's just, it's just really odd to have it out in the community and stuff, and not to be able to address it.
Certainly, because there was an investigation, I really couldn't give you any details.
But it's all public record?
Certainly, it is now.
It was from the beginning.
Well-
If you look at the closure dates and stuff, and I mean, from the minute they come down here, it was public record. So it would be helpful to know, we could support each other.
All right. Okay. Anything else, ma'am? Okay, we're gonna go announcements and reports. I was recently at, I was trying to take the room at six, seven, I don't know. I went to two conferences that we talked about at the last meeting, and you guys, correct me if I've already talked about it. The first conference was an emergency management conference, and then the next day was a mayor's exchange conference, most very helpful, a boatload of information and a lot of- questioning that you wonder about in your head about if, if we had a situation here and it's not necessarily always fires. The big thing is cyber stuff now that's creeping up there. We've got our own water system. There's always a possibility of it being compromised. And how do you deal with things in a couple, a couple of takeaways where's one? Always keep your communications up at any cost, whatever it takes. Because that's, in this age of cell phones, if communication laps, you know, people can't have conversation. And forgive me if I've already announced this, but in a conversation with the mayor of Medical Lake, they've got a ten percent contingency fund that they have set aside in their, that's a non-touchable fund. Only in the event of an emergency can they get to it. Because when stuff happens, they just don't take your credit cards on stuff. And you've got to have funds to keep lights on, to keep doors open, to buy water, to do whatever you have to do. So the city of Medical Lake has used, and they've got way more access to a lot of stuff. They've got some hotel, motel stuff that they've pieced together at ten percent of where our annual budget is set aside. And this, you know, our three million dollar budget, you can do the math and figure out how much that is. But it was, it was both conferences, both were very fascinating to listen to. And I understand how I should be really thankful for our community because there's people out there that are one point eight million dollars in arrears. You get sworn in and this is what's dumped on his lap, one point eight million. Mayor from Dayton tells me that their sewer plant's going to be twenty-three million. So I feel pretty fortunate about where we are financially and where we are in escape. Then a week later, I went to, went at you to high ACC conference in infrastructure. Matt was there, J U B had a crew down there. And they're pretty fast, they're amazing. It's like, and I said this, there's a lot of fire holes. There is an amazing amount of information out there, an amazing amount of connections. But just, I'll, I'll just kick out a quick story. The first afternoon, we were, we were done there at noon, went through an afternoon of sessions and information. And they had a social time afterwards where the durs. Stephen and I walk over there and tried to figure out where we're going to sit, got a plate of munchies. And we choose a table and we happened to run into J U B's sewer guru for the three states in the Northwest states. And we had a forty-minute conversation with him about all the options, other places that we should look at and other opportunities that are out there. And I, I, as he left to go, I think we scared him. As he left to go work someplace else, I looked at Stephen and said, what are the chances? When we walk in and this is the table we happen to sit on. And it was amazing, it was amazing, he was a very bright guy, amazing and had lots of ideas. For instance, there's a technology that we're looking at for the sewer plant that's, that's really new. That's less than, I'm not sure if it's, if it's ten years old even, that they've got in place up at, where they, right now. And so Stephen and I, or Stephen, at least Stephen's going to go up and take a look and find out if there's something that we can dive into. And Matt already knows about it, so we've had conversations about that. So I just, the council for letting, allowing me to go and, and talk to people, so, yeah.
It's a huge area and when you see the potentials for digital problems you might have. We get hacked and just the whole city down on and on. It's, it's really amazing. It's pretty scary. And we're lucky that it happened that any number of things can happen. People say, well, you got, it takes so much money to cover a lot of these things. That you need state agencies and all kinds of stuff, and you're right, that just fires so many things.
Well, if I remember right, when, when we looked at this stuff earlier, part of our advantages is because we don't have a main server. Okay, it makes it harder to get the system open.
True.
So, you know, there's, there's a reason why we are over there.
My office got, had a server and got, it's all the attempts to get hacked. You have to be clearing things out or it's a pain every time.
I'm learning way more about this than I ever thought I needed, so, okay. All right, that's my end. We'll start, oh, ma'am?
And my mind went blank. So I, I'm sorry. I was also able to attend the A W C expo, which has to do with all the insurances that they offer, offers, both liability insurance and then like other H R end of insurances, et cetera. So that was a good day to learn about, you know, different ways that we can show up what we're doing here from an H R standpoint and also from a liability standpoint. So that was useful. I think as you look around, it probably doesn't look like the boxes changed very much, but actually we're on the cusp of getting rid of most of these boxes. We're just down to a couple of little piles here. So I know I said it last time, I don't know what the job Victoria was doing, but we're actually at the point now where we're going to have to find, figure out how to get all this stuff shredded. And then the next thing is we've got one more section of this project with getting our old police records dealt with, which kind of have taken care of themselves because they're moldy. They're moldy, so.
Back to dirt, huh?
Pretty much. So we're not going to destroy them in a different manner, but everything's well past its retention schedule anyways. Who's that?
Did you want to talk about the bid?
Oh, yes, thank you. That was what I planned on.
I thought while you were talking, okay.
So today was the day at noon where we were accepting the bids for the old city hall. We have one sealed bid for that and hanging way under the floor. So the process is to turn around and re-advertise that. But I have a quick question for, for Eric. Are we not allowed to tell what the floor is? Because the last time we didn't, but I didn't know if that was, we had to do it that way or if, if this next time around, we couldn't advertise what the floor was?
Typically, I wouldn't advertise what the floor is. This was more trying to get the highest.
I, I don't, I think if you don't advertise the floor, we might not get anything above it. So that's my concern.
Good point, good point. Actually, in both ways, you're right. You, if it's a buyer's market or seller's market, it's a different deal. But if it's buyer's market right now, maybe putting a floor down would force them to at least give you that. But on the other hand, you lock that in as your floors. You're right.
But, I mean, I know that that doesn't mean someone can't outbid that, but there is, that would be a place to start, so that was my, my question.
So it was subjective or then the assessed value or?
Not, not in the area. So that's, that's why I was asking, because I thought. And I did have a couple of inquiries. One was pretty serious, but they were just really kind thrown off by not knowing where to start.
No, they don't want to overbid either.
That's right. They don't want to overbid, but just not.
Well, I think since you didn't get any response, I don't see a harm in saying, this is our, you got to start here. Not at all.
Okay, so we're not going to make anything tonight, just think about it. We'll, we'll go, we'll converse about this later, how's that? All right? Okay.
Can you, can we, my follow-up question. Is it making sense, is it, can she rent the thing and, and is it possible to rent it? Make any money off it other than what we've been doing with these?
I don't know the answer to that. It, it has a bathroom on the main floor and upstairs, but no showers, no kitchen. You know, I mean, so it's suitable for an office, both on the main floor and the upstairs. The city would probably want to do some maintenance downstairs if we were to rent it.
Like put some money into it, right, and keep it, and rent it?
Yeah.
Oh.
You probably don't want to get in business if you're like a residential because the, in the city's going to be, it's going to be bound to the residential landlord intent act. We're irresponsible for maintenance. It can just be a lot more cost than it's worth. And especially if you get a renter in there that doesn't pay the rent, it can be very difficult. You, you wouldn't be opposed if it was a business rental? No, because the landlord intent act doesn't apply to commercial leases. But even then, it's like, you know, you can't, you want to kind of.
You still have to maintain.
Yeah, and so, you know, it's, it's like, you know, I don't want to see being in the business of being a landlord at all, but especially not with the landlord intent. There was, I've been playing with that for the last, yeah, that's why we put like. Let me, what do you think about pursuing your nine money? Maybe make this over into a better business type of a place. But I don't, I don't want to get into it either, so I was kind of hoping that.
I just think the longer it's going to end up costing us more than what we're gaining. I'd like to see if they advertised and sold or we have to wait six months. So we think that's still cheaper than having to put all our dollars in there.
Okay, all right.
I agree.
Thanks. All right, we're going to start.
Can I ask a couple of questions on the Jeffrey history?
Sure.
On the last page, there was a couple of them. Do you two want to wait for vouchers and forms for that?
Oh, I guess so. I thought it was sent to you.
All right, okay, so we're going to go around and finish our reports and then use our reports. You know, we've been talking on the way. We got anything for us?
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm going to a fraud detection class. So update my, my knowledge on fraud detection and how to handle it.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Just a couple of questions. So we, we had talked about building inspector. And so is Kevin, is our building inspector now?
Yes.
In, in the town? And I know that it was asked of you to consider maybe bringing someone from out of town. And did you decide not to pursue that or?
Oh, I know that was a recommendation. I, I've not seen the numbers as to why, where that would be advantageous. How's that?
Well, so is Kevin licensed or what? I don't know what you have to have certified to be a building inspector? Is that, is that?
You don't have to be in with the town.
Okay. For that, well, I just, I was thinking back to when Deb Brown came through and she did that conference, I have their name right, right? She did that conference in Malvin and had, was talking, I was talking to her about Oakdale and what their old buildings. And her recommendation was that it just is a good idea to bring someone from without, outside the community. And this reminded me that we had asked you about that. And so when Kevin is out of town, what are we doing?
Steve's, they've worked it out that Steve is still on the dot. He will cover for Kevin when he's not here. The beauty about that is it doesn't tie anyone here all the time. If Kevin decides he wants to go play in Hawaii for a month or two, Steve steps in and covers for him and that doesn't tie Steve here either.
Then a different question was, somebody had asked me, can you get a permit to burn an old building or to burn a old house in town? Because I think that a long time ago you could and then people were under the understanding you couldn't. And then last spring, there was a building.
That's through the fire department, not us.
What, it was the fire department?
Yes. They made a decision on that.
The city issues demolition permits, but we don't, we don't issue fire permits for like what you're talking about. We don't, we don't issue fire permits for anything but just a fire pit. And then that fire department inspects those.
Okay, so, and they, well, I guess they were under the understanding that even the fire department wouldn't do that anymore. And so they were confused that that was burned because I, I know someone who was looking at a property that had a home on it and an old home beat up and stuff. And they were interested in it, but they didn't have a way to have the building torn down and burned because they were told that the fire department and the city wouldn't do that.
The, the important part to understand is there's got to be some preparation done before it can be just dosed in and burnt. The windows have probably been taken out. There has to be assured there's not asbestos in, in. I mean, there's some, there's, it's not just like, yeah, go ahead and burn it. You know, they're, they've got to know that it's, that it's acceptable. How's that?
So that's kind of what happened up on the one last spring is they, they got the demolition permit and then they worked with the, because I did, it did look like they had taken, it was a big.
By the way, it looks pretty good up there, doesn't it?
Yeah, looks, looks a lot better.
It's a nice lot now.
Okay. And, okay, my other questions are clear, but that's all I have to say.
All right.
And you're right, another town, they cut a building down, had any permits and there asbestos powder all over the town. They got all kinds of fines. Fifty thousand dollars.
St. John, right.
And they, it was a.
Yeah, I mean, it was, yeah, it was a weekend, yeah, a couple of farmers got together once, the worst that could happen, right?
Yeah, we're, I'll be again. You know, dumped it all on big old, it was all bad.
Right, right, right. So, yeah, that's why, that's why the city's out of the loop on that. It, it like, it puts a layer of something in there that keeps us out of, you know, out of trouble.
And they're smart because that was a total mess. A couple of things, but as far as the, I had mentioned before, union negotiations are, with our term are continuing. That was just the process will go on. The personnel committee will keep monitoring the process. That's what we're supposed to do, timeframe, we'll have to see. We, there's no real locked-in timeframe, but I think we're all aware of it. And that's where we are at this point. Another point unrelated to that, rather kind of a point in order in that, a three-minute comment about the chlorine. I was under the impression we're not supposed to specifically pick on a particular member of the, of the council when somebody's talking as a point in order. You can make your comments, but it should not be personal to one person. I think we decided, I think that was a policy we had.
It was.
Way back when, in fact, Denver made that quite clearly, put that in the policy procedures. Again, talk about, people come up, you even mentioned it, somebody that say that, it doesn't matter what the point is. I mean, what you're saying, they shouldn't particularly pick on one particular person and criticize that person regardless if they think that's their fault or not their fault. So I just want to make a point in order, I need to be careful, I don't think it's fair. The other thing is, and that comments made on that regard, what is the deal with, David, this chlorine business? What is the, what is, I don't know, what is the, what is the real situation on the, on the, our water and chlorine that you have all the certificates on it? I don't know. Where, where are we on this? Is it, is it chlorine or is it levels? Is it, is it community, is there a problem with it? Is that, I don't know, what's going on?
Well, I prefer to let it be a dead issue.
Okay.
Well, I wanted to bring it up on, when I, it came to my time to speak, I wanted to.
Oh, okay.
March go ahead.
Okay.
I'm smiling, I haven't been in there in a short time.
They're waiting.
There's season.
Don't show they are.
There's season abilities to record things.
I am a Seahawks, it's really good to have them to catch you with.
All right, okay.
Well, I just wanted to bring up about the water. I, I approached Dave back in July. The water was horrible of that place. And I was watering my vegetable garden and morning when it dried up, there was white residue on my plants. And I was breaking out and I was breaking out real bad in between my fingers. And my daughter-in-law washing her hair, she was breaking out in her head. Well, we went down to Eugene, Oregon, using their water. Her head cleared up, my hands cleared up and got back. And the water again tasted, I, I wouldn't drink it, but we ended up buying water. And I, I, I wanted to continue watering my garden because it needed watering, but it would have this stuff on top of it. And the plants were wilting, so I didn't water as much. I started watering and I approached Dave, I asked him, how can I have my water tested? I started the watering and I approached Dave, I asked him, how can I have my water tested? And he had just made the comment that he had been testing it and the chemicals were quite high. Chlorine was high and I told him that we have had diarrhea in our household, we have had breakouts with rashes. My daughter-in-law has had breakout with rashes and I was concerned. And I feel that Dave was really picked on tonight, I'm tired of, we're being bullied, that's all I'm saying, we're being bullied and I would like to be able to stop.
Well, can I ask, there are other people have mentioned like over the summer and I know we switch wells, there's comments. I know in my house, the water smells pretty wild and I have noticed more of a chlorine smell. I kind of liked it in the bathtub, in the pool, but I mean, not that strong, but, but I mean, so is 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 there some, the summer, this dry summer, are we having issues or?
The way I understand it, and I've had, I had six hours with Stephen in a car, so we've banded a bunch of, a bunch of different. Anytime there's a temperature change, you know, and stuff like that, things can vary. You know, we are using the second well and we all know the second well is not as great as the first well.
Is it similar to more of being on outside of town?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know about my water.
Right, right, and I, I, you know, I don't have, I usually don't have issues with mine either. So, but in order to keep it quote-unquote fresh, so that if we ever do need it, it's not, it is tolerable. You gotta keep rotating it in, in in using it as you can. And so that's, that's kind of that whole thing and, you know, I I think I was on the council the last time, we had to refinish, you know, when the well went crap and we had to go completely down and reline it and stuff like that. So there's, there's lots of, it's not perfect, it's better than most, everybody's got issues. But anyway, so.
What is the question on, remember having a water system which is left weekly? Is we have the water tested weekly?
You know, I thought I'd ask you to.
We test every day, it has to be within certain parameters every day and then we take lab samples every week.
Does that check for, does that check for chlorine or or everything?
Well, some, we've got the daily tests, the weekly tests and monthly tests. I am not the expert.
I guess my question is, and I appreciate that, is are are these levels, are within normal levels, are all the testing?
Yes.
I mean, people have talked to me and they're concerned and I say, okay.
They are, and then also I do recall that fairly recently Stephen attended a water quality conference and they actually said that we should keep our chlorine about twice what we were keeping it at, which is still below, well below limits. But that's part of it, they want us, the city to see its chlorine levels higher.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, and I, and I will say, I've noticed, I follow some other towns in Ice Fairfield, other towns have commented on chlorine in their water. So is, would it be helpful to have Stephen maybe update it? It's been a while since he's given us a report and maybe just kind of share, so I think it helps some people understand back and forth and the quell some of this stuff.
I'll put it on his schedule, I'll mostly take it. Yeah, I know, he drinks the water from here, he knows our bite, follows water and so.
Well, we, we just never have.
He's like, well, yeah, he's down from the river, right? Yeah, you know, when you hear about, at the, at the last couple of conferences I, Cleon was in a Cleon was in a situation where Yakima was, they were shutting their water off. They couldn't get water anymore from the, from the Yakima River basin because they needed it to irrigate. And that's where Cleon gets their water from. And they had no warning, nothing, it just banged. This was, I mean, they, the conference on, was on to this day and they'd gotten a warning the day before.
Wow, so what did you do, that the city had no?
I don't know, the conference was going on, I didn't hear an answer. I mean, they, I mean, I don't think they just shut the thing off and said, you know, it's not coming back. I mean, we are very blessed about having wells, because it learns lots of people out there that are using rivers, that are using reservoirs, open reservoirs and trying to keep that system. I mean, you know, I've, I've been up in our reservoir once. Previous mayor took me up there just because he thought somebody else should know this other than him and we went up and looked at it. It's quite amazing, you know, about how that works and and and, you know, we are pretty blessed as to where we are.
Assuming, you're right, on the west side, it's all rivers and and open water supply, it's all open.
Yep.
And I think what we've done, try to go a hundred feet on one and five thousand feet on another.
Yeah, something like that.
Something else, really something.
And we've got other wells available around us, you know, other resources, so. They've, I don't know, they're gonna get started drilling out here on the industrial park, you know, in the near future to the end.
Okay, perfect.
I heard, I heard somebody say today.
Yeah.
All right, good, I mean, and you know, and Stephen and I had a conversation on the way back. Is, I wonder if we could access that water to our reservoir well? And then I started looking out, that's like three miles across, there's a crow flies.
Yeah, okay, and then, and then a mile or something like that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, it'd probably be cheaper to drill another well. So anyway, okay, all right, anything we gotta approve the bills?
I think there are questions.
Just on the back page of the check register, the the perk rentals, three thousand four hundred, et cetera, what was that for?
That is for applicants to do some water and sewer work and also out of the airport.
What kind of equipment? Give us a back, give us a track hole.
Yeah.
Escalator.
Escalator.
And why couldn't we use a back hole?
Uh, because this was gonna be a lot quicker and a lot more efficient. Better, better control on what they were doing, they were doing a lot of.
Was it reach issue too?
Yeah.
Well, it's not on here, but what, 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 this means, this equipment they had out here today, it might go by some kind of conveyor belt. Some don't sit out here.
We have to do, oh, sorry.
Is that the crack sewer?
Yeah, we have to do some prep work this fall for next year.
And we'll run that through.
Oh yeah, we know our own one.
Yep.
So is it possible then, I mean, we're really trying to tighten the budget and stuff, I mean, were we, did we, were we asked to approve the rental of that?
It's within the budget to do that.
What is, oh, okay.
I mean.
It just seems like if we have equipment to to do something, we have to rent other stuff, like what's that?
For instance, when we did the sewer project of the, of the, let's say, I'd say rented another hole, a backhoe to go with it because it was more efficient, you know, and easier to get done. Oh, by the way, I want just to let you know, the grater is giving us issues. Papay's rowing machinery has been down to work on it once. Got it kind of back together, kind of so it moves, kind of so it thinks about moving, kind of so it doesn't think about moving. But it's not great, it's not good yet. I forget how old that grater is, but it's, was used when we got it and we've had it as long as I've been here, so. So it's gonna be hauled up to rowing machinery, to get work done and we hired a local guy to haul it out, so everybody stays, that place stays here, so.
So we used our twenty thousand dollar budget for buying machinery for the street sweeper. How are we, how are we paying for the grater to be fixed, does that come out of general funds then? Is that a good thing to repair to the end, to cover it up? Okay.
We'll see what it gonna cost, because I was trying to do this as efficiently as possible one.
Well, isn't there a limit of like expenditures that need to prove by the council before?
I believe it's five thousand dollars in there.
Could we, maybe find out just to be sure?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, and then the John Deere financial, six hundred and seventeen dollars, does that work on one of the parts?
It's always parts.
I notice that's a frequent thing. And then the USA Blue Book, two thousand, what is that?
Uh, we get supplies for water and sewer from USA Blue Book and, I'm sorry, because another one is, so many large bills from regular.
Okay.
Chlorine. That's where they get you.
Those were all my questions.
Okay, at this, at this time, I'll accept the motion to approve the bills.
I'll make one.
David, move that, mic's stuck. Any discussion, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. And there's any call for executive session tonight?
Good for you to ask a question. So we're at November, what are our plans for the budget meetings and, thank you.
And so the preliminary budget hearing is the second meeting in November and the final one is the first meeting in December. But you had said you wanted to do, you know, like a really good budget workshop this year and so we could do that like some evening, you know, whatever works for people so that there's plenty of time to go with that. We just have to decide on when, so the next, the next meeting is November fourth, I'm sorry, third, I think, actually. So if we could do a budget workshop somewhere between there and the preliminary budget hearing, that would be helpful.
So if we have a different, you know, clocks, November third is our first council meeting.
In November, yeah.
So how about if we have it Tuesday at six o'clock again?
The next day?
No, not.
Not one.
No, Wednesday?
Or?
Maybe, the fifth.
Tuesday's election day.
Oh, right.
The sixth. The sixth, so it's a Thursday. Do you wanna get away from that a week and go the next week?
Yeah, the in-between week, so we're not like out like for the council meeting, okay? So that.
Maybe like that Tuesday?
Be like the seventh, eleventh? What day?
The eleventh, is that, oh, that's.
That's better, Wednesday.
Twelve.
Wednesday, the twelfth, would that work?
Yep.
Okay.
The twelfth.
At six?
Six, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need, do we need to motion that as our special?
It would be helpful, but it's, well, yes it is, so we'll advertise it to them.
We can wait, so, who's that on the next meeting?
We could, as long as everyone knows when it is.
Okay, all right. All right.
And then we didn't approve Tommy's.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's right, okay, all right. So at this point, I'll accept the motion to approve the.
I think we already had the motion.
Yeah, to approve the approval.
I had already motioned that.
It's been moved.
Seconded it.
Second, all right, all right, so at this point, I'll, any discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Mike's opposed.
Seriously.
All right.
We have voted last night, being.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll accept the motion to adjourn.
You can work them out coming again.
Yeah.
So watch the games.
And second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?